All right. It looks like we are good to go, Senator. We have people in the attendees column and we're on YouTube.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Senate Executive Departments and Administration Committee. I am Senator Sharon Carson, and I represent Senate District 14, comprising the towns of Londonderry, Hudson, and Auburn. And today, we will be holding the very first meeting of the committee. But before we get started, I'm going to read through a checklist to ensure that the meeting we are holding is in compliance with the right-to-know law. As the Chair of the Senate Committee on Executive Departments and Administration, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04 and its extensions, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which is authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. In accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that, number one, we are providing public access to the meeting and with additional access possible by video and other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the committee and selected staff have the ability to communicate contemporaneously in this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously watch and/or listen to the meeting on Zoom or YouTube and via phone by following the directions and links provided on the General Court website. Number two, we have provided public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting in the Senate calendar. Three, we are providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem, please email remote senate, and that's one word, at leg.state.nh.us or call 603-271-6931. Number four, in the event the public is unable to access the meeting, it will be adjourned and rescheduled. Number five, please note that all votes taken during this meeting shall be done by a roll call vote. And number six, finally, let's get the meeting started by taking roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state where they are and if anyone else is in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the right-to-know law. I will call the roll. Senator Reagan?
Senator Reagan, I'm in my office by myself.
Okay. Senator Ricciardi?
Good morning. I am in my home by myself, but my husband is in the house and may pass through.
Thank you. Senator Kavanaugh?
Good morning. Excuse me. Kevin Kavanaugh, my home in Manchester, and I am in my home alone. Thank you.
Senator Prentice?
Good morning, Senator Prentice. I'm in my home in West Lebanon, New Hampshire, and my husband is in the house with me, but not in this room.
Thank you. And Senator Carson, I am at my home in Londonderry. My daughter is in an adjacent room, but other than that, I am alone in the room. So, we're... Thank you all. We do have some members of our staff. I'm just going to introduce them to anyone who's watching. We have Mr. Cameron Lapine, Mr. Griffin Roeburg, and Ms. Marie Marston, who's going to be assisting us this morning. So, that being said, we're going to go ahead and get started. I'm going to hand the gavel over to Senator Reagan, who is the Vice Chair of the committee, and we'll get started.
Go ahead and introduce your bill.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm introducing this morning Senate Bill 15, which is relative to the ratification of amendments of the State Building Code. What this bill does is it ratifies certain amendments to the State Building Code and to the State Fire Code. And thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, seeing none. Okay, we're going to move on. Let's see, who is next? The Chair is going to call Mr. Sean Bergeron.
I thought I was the Chair.
Just for me to testify, because I have the sign sheet, sign-in sheet. You don't. You don't have access to it.
Good morning, everyone. I hope you can hear me. I'm Sean Bergeron, the Chairman of the State of New Hampshire Building Code Review Board. I'm visiting with you this morning from my office in Conway. And I just want to be, I want to be very brief, but I really need to thank your committee, Senator Carson and Senator Reagan, for working to get Senate Bill 15 introduced and hopefully through the process. This is the culmination of several years of work by the Building Code Review Board and the Fire Marshal's Office, and it really is beneficial for the people of New Hampshire. It's beneficial for the construction industry in New Hampshire. It's beneficial for the design professionals. It's better, it's beneficial for the material suppliers. It's been a long time in the works. I appreciate everyone's efforts and patience in getting through all of this, particularly during this COVID crisis and these Zoom meetings, which nobody, you know, they don't work the best, but they're working. So, that's all. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. But again, please, please understand that the Building Code Review Board greatly appreciates your efforts on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bergeron. Are there any questions from the committee? Okay, seeing none. Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak to Senate Bill 15?
Senator Carson, I have Paul Parisi, who'd also like to speak.
Okay, that's fine.
Second up.
Good morning. Good morning. How are you?
Hold on. Yep.
Good morning, Senator. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Good morning, Senator, and members of the committee. For the record, my name is Paul Parisi. It's my honor to serve as State Fire Marshal, and thanks for having us this morning. So, I too want to echo Sean's comments and thank the Senator Carson and the committee for taking this bill up. I do want to just make a point of clarification in that, as I'm sure you know, this was before the General Court, this issue was before the General Court in the 2020 legislative session. It was then House Bill 1714. It was rolled into an omnibus bill, which was House Bill 1234, that was ultimately vetoed by the Governor. When that occurred, as you may, as you may recall, the way that the Board of Fire Control adopts Building Code amendments and the way, correction, the way the Board of Fire Control adopts fire code amendments and the way the Building Code Review Board adopts Building Code amendments are slightly different. When the Building Code Review Board adopts an amendment, it doesn't go into effect until such time the General Court ratifies it. When the Board of Fire Control adopts an amendment, it goes into effect as soon as the Commissioner of Safety executes it, and then there is a one-year period of time until such time that the General Court can ratify it. When House Bill 1234 last year was vetoed, that, that time of the 12-month window was set to expire this January. To that end, the Board of Fire Control has re-adopted the same amendments that they had originally in 2019 and early 2020, so that they kind of refreshed those amendments, so that we restarted the 12-month clock. In addition to, so in addition to ratifying or asking you to ratify what the Board of Fire Control had done last year when you considered this bill, they have also amended the code and relative to stationary energy storage as well as oil burning equipment. So, when we move forward, Senator, we will probably need an amendment so that it doesn't just read under line 20, the Board of Fire Control on January 15, 2020. We will need to just tweak that and amend that, so it is all-inclusive of everything that has occurred since then as well. Thank you very much, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the committee? Okay, seeing none. Chief, I've got a question. You talked about line 20, the Board of Fire Control, on January 15. What is the tweak that needs to happen here?
Senators, thank you for the question. So, in addition, I think that we could say the State Board of Fire Control between, we probably should put a date range and say between January of 2020 and January, well, the Board of Fire Control is still contemplating amendments to the, for the 2018 code, but we could, we could potentially look at that in a different light. So, if we wanted to clean up the previous stuff, we should probably say from January 2020 through January of 2021.
Okay.
And then if we, when we look at the 18 code, we can perhaps do those amendments in a, in a separate bill.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I think that that's probably the better thing to do, because if you look at the bill, lines seven through 17, it actually names what those amendments are, and we'd have to get the names of any other amendments. So, okay, I'm just, just for process purposes, I want to make sure that we get this correct. So, okay, all right. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much. Are there any other people who would like to speak?
Sharon, I'm back.
Okay. John, do you have, Senator Reagan, do you have a question?
Yeah, when will my power come back on?
Sorry, I don't know the answer to that one.
That's what happened on a power failure, and I had a call in.
Okay.
Senator, I do have somebody raising their hand, but they've labeled themselves APB. I can bring them in if you'd like.
Sure.
Good morning, Senator. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hi, members of the committee, Senator Carson, it's Ari Pollak with the Home Builders. By, I think I just have my initials in the Zoom setting, and I'll change that. I apologize. I wasn't intending to speak. We're offering support for the bill as introduced. My question is only in relation to the Fire Marshal's testimony and how we can ratify or recognize amendments to a version of the fire code that has not been adopted yet in New Hampshire. My understanding is that the 2015 code was adopted by prior legislation and that the Board of Fire Control may be entertaining amendments to the 2015 code that are now the subject of ratification, and certainly, we are aware of those and support those. But I thought I heard the Fire Marshal testify that there are also amendments coming through the board relating to the 2018 code, and I wasn't sure how those would be ripe, given the state of the code adoption for the 2015 versus 2018 versions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pollak. That was the question, one of the questions that I had, and I was going to call Chief Parisi to try to get some clarification, because we have to be very specific in naming these amendments, and we have not adopted the 2018 code. I know that there's legislation to do so, and that might be a vehicle if they need amendments. But we just, I think with this particular bill, these amendments have been hanging out there for well over a year, and I think that it's crucial that we get these done before we start thinking about amendments to the 2018 code. But we're going to, we're going to look into that and come up with a solution.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any questions for Mr. Pollak from the committee? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much for your testimony, Mr. Pollak. Are there any further questions, or is there anyone else who would like to speak?
I see nobody else raising their hand at this time in the attendees list, Senator.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing on Senate Bill 15. Seeing that it is 9:15, and our next bill is scheduled for 9:15, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing on Senate Bill 21 and recognize the prime sponsor, Senator Sherman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good morning to the committee. For the record, I'm Senator Tom Sherman, District 24, which is 11 towns on the seacoast. And I am introducing SB 21, hopefully for the very last time. This has been an ongoing saga. We had a, it started with the desire to make sure that Greenland, who town has property within Peas Development Authority's jurisdiction, had a voice on Peas Development Authority Board. The original bill added a completely additional member. After a great deal of negotiation, which was really successful, and you, Madam Chair, were a part of that, we were able to end up with Portsmouth giving up a half representative, and so Newington and Greenland split their representative, and, which was actually much more proportional to the amount of land that Greenland has in Peas. That bill sailed through. Unfortunately, it sailed through, but the change in the quorum, which was in the original bill, was never removed from the bill that sailed through, the amended version. That quorum change reflected an additional full member, but the reality was that there was only an additional, there was no additional member. So, it made the quorum inaccurate and unworkable. This was picked up at the time of signing the bill, and the Governor went ahead and signed the bill with the understanding it would be corrected in 2020. And in, the good news was that this original bill did not take effect until April of 2021, when the current representative, his term expires. So, this was, this sailed through again in 2020 with the fix, which is what you see in front of you. In 2020, it was SB 592, exact same wording. COVID hit. It was incorporated into the ill-fated omnibus bill HB 1234, and unfortunately, it was vetoed, as was your prior bill. So, Senator Morris, Senator Susie, Senator Carson, and I, and pretty much everyone else understands that we're sort of under a time pressure to get this repeal of that quorum adjustment in place before April 1st. And that's all this does. It just gets rid of that quorum adjustment that was left over from the original bill in 2019.
Thank you very much for your testimony this morning, Senator. Are there any questions from the committee? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much for your testimony, Senator.
Thank you.
Griffin, I don't have anyone else signed up, so is there anybody else who would like to speak?
If anybody would like to speak, I ask that they virtually raise their hand, or if they're accessing by phone, press star nine now. I am not seeing any other hands raised at this time, Senator.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and close the public hearing on Senate Bill 21. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Senator Reagan moves to go into executive session. Senator Prentice, seconds. I'm going to go ahead and call the roll. Senator Ricciardi?
Senator Ricciardi, yes.
Senator Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Senator Prentice?
Prentice, yes.
Senator Reagan?
Yes.
Senator Carson? Yes. Is there a motion on Senate Bill 21?
I move ought to pass.
Okay, Senator Reagan moves ought to pass. Is there a second? Seconded by Senator Prentice. Is there any discussion on the ought to pass motion? Okay, seeing none. I will call the roll. Senator Ricciardi?
Senator Ricciardi, yes.
Senator Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Senator Prentice?
Prentice, yes.
Senator Reagan?
Yes.
Senator Carson? Yes. Okay. Is there a motion for the consent calendar?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Senator Kavanaugh, seconded by Senator Reagan. Is there any discussion on the consent calendar motion? Okay, seeing none. I will call the roll. Senator Ricciardi?
Senator Ricciardi, yes.
Senator Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Senator Prentice?
Prentice, yes.
Senator Reagan?
Yes.
And Senator Carson votes yes. Senator Reagan, would you like to do the little blurb thing?
Sure.
Okay. Okay. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Moved by Senator Prentice, seconded by Senator Reagan. I will call the roll. Senator Ricciardi?
Senator Ricciardi, yes.
Senator Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Senator Prentice?
Prentice, yes.
Senator Reagan?
Yes.
Senator Carson? Yes. Okay. We've got our first bill done of the year. Okay, our next hearing is scheduled for 9:30. It is 9:22, so the committee will be in recess until 9:30.
Senator Reagan, we did have to mute you all.
Senator Reagan, we did have to mute you while we were in recess because there was quite a bit of background noise. If you press star nine, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Okay. All right, why don't we go ahead, it's 9:30, we'll get started. Just let me know when you're ready. Cam?
I believe I am ready, Griffin, are you all set?
I am good.
All right.
Okay, the committee will come out of recess and we are going to open the public hearing on Senate Bill 26 and recognize the prime sponsor, Senator Geida.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the committee. For the record, I'm State Senator Bob Geida, prime sponsor of Senate Bill 26, currently serving my third term representing District 2, which includes the town of Haverhill and its included Woodsville Fire Precinct. I'm introducing this legislation to end the interference of the state legislature in the appropriation of local tax revenues for local highway maintenance in accordance with the expressed will of the significant majority of voters in the town of Haverhill and its Board of Selectmen. Senate Bill 26 has two sections. Section one seeks to end the state's interference in local highway appropriations. Section two is requested by the Department of Revenue Administration to address the Woodsville Fire Precinct's longstanding refusal to comply with state laws governing its financial affairs. Regarding section one of the bill, as Chairman of the Senate Ways and Means Committee, I'm a longtime student of tax policy. Under our system of local taxation, the community's residents pay property taxes to support local needs, raised in accordance with locally developed warrant articles. The appropriation of funds is directed by these articles and not by state law. However, the appropriation of Haverhill tax revenues to the Woodsville Fire Precinct is currently directed by a formula in state law, and any change to that formula requires the approval of the state legislature. This is the antithesis of local control and has resulted in grossly disproportionate state mandated appropriations in a community that seeks a unified highway department and a single highway budget. The state mandated formulated delivers five times the revenue per mile of roads to the Woodsville Fire Precinct as is spent by, per mile by the town of Haverhill on its roads. Section two of the legislation is presented at the request of the Department of Revenue Administration. The Woodsville Fire Precinct, despite numerous written, email and telephonic requests spanning a period of years, has never in its 120-plus year history performed an annual audit as required by state law. A financial review, quotes, attempted in 2014 was incomplete because the precinct could not provide adequate records substantiating its financial activities. The fire precinct provide adequate, I'm sorry, the fire precinct operates not only fire and ambulance service, but also the highway department, sewer and electric and light enterprises grossing millions of dollars each year. The department requested section two of this bill to address the precinct's noncompliance with state law and generally accepted accounting practices and to develop an accurate assessment of its financial operations. The committee should be aware that several precinct officials published false information in letters and newspaper articles, made false statements in their official capacity at public meetings and the precinct annual meeting. These falsehoods were egregious enough that the department required a public retraction to be printed in the local paper and provided additional correspondence, which was also published in local newspapers refuting the falsehoods. Several officials have subsequently either resigned or not sought reelection. While no progress reports on the audit have been provided to the fire precinct by the accounting firm, interim reports have been provided to the department. In addition, in attendance at this Zoom hearing is Mr. James Gary, Director of the Municipal and Property Division of the Department of Revenue Administration. I would ask that the committee invite Director Gary to provide any remarks and address any questions it may have on section two of the bill and any of the actions required therein, to the extent permitted by the department's policy and the accounting industry rules. In closing, I ask the committee to end the state's interference in the appropriation of Haverhill's local tax revenues and to require that the Woodsville Fire Precinct operate in compliance with the laws governing the financial operations of every other political enterprise in the state. This concludes my testimony and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for your testimony, Senator. Are there any questions from the committee? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much for your testimony this morning.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the committee.
The Chair will call Rick Ladd. Good morning, Representative.
Good morning, Senator Carson and members of the committee. I thank you very much for holding this Senate hearing today. If I'm a little slow, please, I apologize. I was in nine hours of surgery this weekend, dealing with an abrasion, so a little bit sore, but doing fine. Senator, SB 26 is a continuance of SB 14 and of course, the omnibus bill you had, 1234, where it was part of it. And I believe in the House, one of the prime reasons for that going down to 1234 was because of the inclusion of SB 414, Woodsville Roads Bill. You've had a short history from Senator Geida, from Bob, I appreciate that. I was working with Senator Reynolds back in 2008 when we set up the formula for the distribution of highway block monies and the portion of the net highway budget to the Woodsville Fire District. That was concurred and supported by all commissioners in the Woodsville Fire District and all select board members at that time, of which I was Chair of the Select Board in Haverhill. And I've now been a representative here for, I'm going into my 13th year, representing the town of Haverhill. Haverhill has a number of precincts or districts within it, with separate commissioners for their water districts, three separate fire departments, a number of commissioner meetings, planning boards. It's a very different town, it's much like Conway once at one time. With this, we had town meetings last spring and there was a warrant article in the town report, warrant article 24, and you should have a sheet that I sent to Josh this morning, a document which shows that warrant. In that warrant, it was a warrant dealing with the highway department's merger to see if the town would agree to that. They had first heard a presentation from Senator Geida and there was a lot of concern generated about the need for a forensic audit, an audit of the Woodsville Fire District in terms of how they appropriate, control their funds. As a result, there was support for that article. However, that article, if you read the highlighted portion in the document, it further says, "This article is subject to an affirmative vote from the Woodsville Fire District to transfer said ownership and assets to the town and to approval from the New Hampshire General Court." That's due to our statutory language. Well, that vote occurred in the precinct of Woodsville and it was unanimously voted 52 to 0 not to transfer the roads over to the town. There is also another attempt to have that happen with the fire department down in my precinct in Haverhill Corner and also rejected on a 45 to 6 vote. What is the concern here is that there were no plans presented to the town meeting or to the precincts in regard to how these transfers would occur, how that would impact our personnel within those departments, how it would impact retirement, labor costs, salary, vehicles, capital needs, for example, new highway department buildings. No impact in terms of how it would impact our property taxes throughout the entire community. That's all the precincts, from Mountain Lakes to Haverhill Corner to Pike, North Haverhill to Woodsville. And so the citizenry was objecting to that in both of the precincts I'm talking about and voted down this motion or this article and to also say that, no, this is a local issue. When I met last year and we were developing this SB 414, which is now SB 26, much changed. The goal was to realign the proportionment formula that Deb Reynolds and I had put together. And that was needed. We also were looking at, we wanted to distribute the highway block money in conformance with the DOT formula used to send it down to Haverhill. So Woodsville will get the same type of percentage of that based upon DOT formula. Also, there was amendment that I had brought forward that was, I was trying to say that any further changes had to be done at the local level and I support Representative Senator Geida's statement that this is a local issue and it should be resolved locally. To mandate something coming down from on high to a local commission, to the select board, to the townspeople is the wrong way to get lasting ownership and success in what you're trying to do. The results of this was that the Woodsville Commissioners have reorganized their management and supervision of their water and light board, their fire district, ambulance services, and they have a manager up there now who recognizes, yes, there has been sloppy management of our books. That goes back to many of these small towns up this way. It's not a criminal activity, it's just being the way their forefathers have done it. I can go back eight generations where my grandfather was one of the founders of this particular community and they were probably doing it then. So in conclusion, I'd like to state that if we want to see something happen in a way that it's going to be positive and not split this community apart, and this is the most contentious bill that's affected this part of the world, this part of the Upper Valley, in years. It's split this community wide open, there is a fire meeting tonight just dealing with the same type of issue on the fireside and people are saying, "We're ready to split away from Haverhill, that's Woodsville." They're saying, "We're going to split from our own town." That's where all our revenue comes from, that's where our property assets, our commercial properties are there. The taxes, if Woodsville decides to depart from the town for the rest of this community are going to skyrocket on us. We don't want to go that direction. We need to keep our culture together, we need to be consolidating more than anything else. And I believe that with a good transitional plan brought forward by the select board and the commissioners working together, we will have success. But we're not going to have success if we end up in the courts litigating each other. The Woodsville Commissioners now has spent almost $100,000 on this along with I don't know what amount the town has spent. That's all coming from the local tax base. So thank you very much for the opportunity to participate today. It's good seeing you people in action again. Welcome back to Concord.
Senator Carson, you're muted.
Thank you very much for your testimony this morning, Representative. Are there any questions from the committee?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Senator Reagan?
I have a question for Rick. Rick, is there, are there actions being taken now that could change the outcome of the present situation?
If I'm, I'm not muted, yes. Senator Reagan, yes, the actions are occurring. In fact, the audit has commenced. The Woodsville Commissioners have hired a manager up there who was the CEO up at Upper Valley Press. A good, strong manager who recognizes their bookkeeping has just been, quote, sloppy. And that needs to change, that is being changed. Reports are going back and forth weekly with DRA. There has been no forensic issues identified. There's no red flags in regard to that that are occurred, there's no criminal activity. It's just the way their forefathers had done it and it was wrong. We all recognize that. And the town does to, and quite frankly, Senator, the town is willing to move forward and try to combine these services in that more efficient economical manner, but we would just like to have that plan presented to us by the select board and the commissioners before we take that gamble. We've had two highway departments in this community for decades, going back into the 1800s. It's very difficult to make such a significant change of this when we're in this remote status. My recommendation is just try to retain this bill for a while until we have March meeting, you have the results of these audits, and then we can move forward with the Senate and the hearings also in the House. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you. Are there any further questions for Representative Ladd? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much for your testimony this morning, Representative.
Thank you very much, Erin, have a good day.
You too. The Chair will call Bridget Coddling.
Hello, can you hear us? Okay.
Okay, we're getting a lot of bounce back from members who aren't. Okay, we're not getting it now. Bridget, can you unmute and we'll see if that?
I've asked her to unmute, but I haven't gotten any response.
Okay.
Okay, I think she unmuted.
Oh, Bridget?
Yeah, can you hear us?
Do you have the meeting open on a separate screen or a separate computer that's replaying the audio?
We're getting a lot of echoes from your end, Bridget.
Is it on?
Yep, we can hear you.
And I'm not hearing an echo.
Hold on.
Can you hear us?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello?
Good morning, Ms. Coddling.
I'm sorry, we can't hear you today, can you hear us?
Yes. Yes, we can hear you.
Senator, if you'd like, I can call up the next person and I can work with Bridget offline to see if I could bring her back later.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and do that?
Hi, so my name is Bridget Coddling and I'm the Town Manager for the Town of Haverhill.
There we go. Good morning.
If you can just let us know if you're not hearing us, then I'll stop and we can reconfigure what we're doing here, but I'm going to keep going and if you can't hear me, wave at me. Town of Haverhill Manager. I started here in April of 2019. The summer of 2019, I was approached by the Woodsville Precinct to review the highway funding formula, which distributes money to the highway, to the Woodsville Fire District for their highway department. At that time, our financial officer and myself started an investigation into the history of Woodsville Highway Funding, which started a very long time ago, decades ago. And it's changed a number of times throughout the years for a variety of reasons. Usually it was to make adjustments to the formula and how money was sent to Woodsville for highways. Usually it attributed, or it resulted in an increase in the funding for the department and Woodsville. However, through that evaluation, it became very clear to me and our financial officer that there was a pretty significant disparity going on between the funding, between the funding of the highway department for the town and the highway department that exists in Woodsville. So for those people who don't know Haverhill very well, which is probably all of you, maybe most of you, there are eight miles of road, approximately eight miles of road, that the highway department in Woodsville manages and maintains. The rest of Haverhill, the highway department has to manage and maintain 73 miles of road. So that's pretty significant. And what's interesting is that we found that about 25% of all of our highway funding was being sent up to Woodsville. However, when you do the calculation between eight miles and 72 miles, it's only about 10% of the roads. So they have 10% of the roads, they were getting 25% on average of our funding that's attributed to roads. So when we saw that, we started taking a closer look. So when we saw that, we started taking a closer look and realized that the typical budget for a Woodsville Highway Department was around $420,000. $420,000 for eight miles of road. The highway budget for, on average, for the Haverhill Highway Department, so for the rest of Haverhill, 72 miles or 73 miles of road is around $700,000. So when you do the math there, we found that we're paying about $50,000 per mile to manage and maintain roads in Woodsville, and about $9,500 a mile to manage and maintain the rest of the roads throughout the town. So when you start to see those numbers, you want to dig a little deeper, so we did. So we looked back over all of the different legislation, all the memorands of understanding and the changes to the memorandums that have happened over time. We looked at the formula, we looked at the spreadsheet, we looked at all of it. And we, the only thing that we could conclude was that this disparity was not working for the people of Haverhill. And I recognize that Rick Lad told you that Woodsville voted 52 to 0 against an article to merge the highway departments. However, he briefly alluded to the fact that townwide, people overwhelmingly did want this, and it was because they recognized that it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to fund an entire highway department for eight miles of road. And who's funding that? The town is funding that, the people of Haverhill are funding that. Now with that said, Rick also mentioned that the forefathers, what they were doing in Woodsville with regards to the finances was wrong. And I would go a little further and say that perhaps the forefathers of the town were wrong in what they decided to do with creating two different highway departments. It might have made sense 100 years ago, it doesn't make sense today. Our highway department is very well equipped to continue to maintain all of the roads in Haverhill, to include the eight miles in Woodsville, and save the taxpayers of the Town of Haverhill an awful lot of money in the process. We recognize that there will be some collaboration and coordination that needs to happen with any transition like this, and we're more than willing and able to have those conversations locally. But I think with this particular bill, what we're asking for is for you to release the people of Haverhill from the burden of funding an entire highway department to maintain eight miles of road, and let the people of Haverhill make decisions regarding appropriations locally.
Okay, thank you very much for your testimony this morning, Ms. Coddling. Are there any questions from the committee? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Yeah, unfortunately, we can't hear questions.
Okay, is there a way, Griffin, that you can let her know that there were no questions? Okay. Okay, and we, thank you. The Chair will call, it looks like Kevin Shelton?
Good morning.
Good morning. Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Good morning to all. I am the Administrator for the Town of, or the precinct of Woodsville Fire District. I started here in March of 23rd of 2020. And my duties have been to oversee all of the operations of the Woodsville Precinct, to include the highway department, ambulance, fire department, water and light, as well as the waste treatment plant. I have been not a lifelong resident of Woodsville, but close to a 40-year resident here, and I own several properties and very proud of our community and very involved outside of work. I am here to speak in opposition of this bill. We have a 100-plus year history of Woodsville taking care of its own roads, 30-year history of working with the Town of Haverhill, and as everyone else has said, creating something that returned monies to Woodsville to fund the Woodsville Highway Operations and not put burden on the Woodsville taxpayers to fund two highway departments. I have been involved in business my whole life, and my job as Administrator, I will tell everyone, was long overdue for the precinct of Woodsville. And, you know, specifically sloppiness, controls. But I've heard for, since long before the last town meeting, that not to take this position here in Woodsville, that folks are going to more than likely go to jail, that there were large sums of money misappropriated. And I took this job knowing that fully, that I was here to cooperate and make, if there was something there, there, that it would be found and that we would move on. To date, I have fully cooperated with the audits. They still tell me they're on schedule to complete them in March. There is a weekly pipeline communication from our audit firm, Plodzek and Sanderson, to the DRA's office. And to my knowledge, and again, I've had as close a pulse as anyone has, there's been no there-theres yet. I urge all of you to let this audit be completed before you take any actions whatsoever. Retain this bill. You know, I think there's two different opinions on what resolving it at the local level means. I've had that discussion with folks yesterday and even today. You know, to me, resolving this at the local level is a local level deciding that they don't want this law to exist anymore and take action, or change it if the formula needs to be changed, but not to have conquered, you folks respectively, eliminate something that unanimously was, been in place for 30 years and has worked to everyone's satisfaction. It has only been really in the last year and a half that there's been any contention about this, and I think, I think it needs to be resolved. With regard to the roads, they have been taken care of by Woodsville, as I say, for over 100 years. In fact, very satisfactory. And the precinct, in fact, was expanded back in the 90s to include a portion of road, Swiftwater Road in particular, that the town was not able to adequately take care of. Due to some strengths or whatever, it was the last place they got to, and service was poor. So I'm a businessman. If it makes financial sense, and there's a real plan, and it has been worked across the aisle, and folks are in agreement, I am all for consolidation. I can see where things work, but that plan has not been done, whether it be the roads or the present, the present-day concerns over fire department, which we're not talking about today. But, and, but if it, if it isn't going to save money and it isn't going to do a better job, there is absolutely no need to make those changes. So again, I would urge you folks to retain this. Let us finish the audit, let us see the outcome of that, and let the locals, folks, work on this instead of Concord. I thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony, Mr. Shelton. Are there any questions from the committee? Okay, seeing none. Again, thank you very much, Mr. Shelton, for your testimony this morning.
Okay, just if I may, I do, there are two other people that are here that did not have the ability to Zoom, that will be testifying here when that opportunity occurs.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. The Chair will call Darwin Clogston.
Darwin, I do not see you listed in the attendees list. If you are present, please virtually raise your hand, or if you're on the phone, please press star nine.
I am here, Senators, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning. My name is Darwin Clogston. I'm the Chair of the Haverhill Select Board. Much like the New Hampshire Legislature, the Board of Selectmen are five people who work hard during the day so we can buy food and pay our bills, then voluntarily give our time at night and weekends to make our community better. Haverhill voters from the five villages of Pike, North Haverhill, the historic town center of Haverhill Corner, Woodsville, and the District of Mountain Lakes elect our Board on an at-large basis. We are one community, and as former Woodsville Precinct Commissioner Richard Guy states in the local papers, we are the town fathers, charged with keeping our community safe, our roads up to proper safety standards, and the budget within the ability of everyone to pay, while keeping this as fair as possible across the five villages. The issue of roads and distribution of money has been a divisive issue for many years, even after the legislation in 2009, which folks thought would create a level playing field. The legislation didn't do as expected. In fact, the interpretation became so convoluted, Woodsville demanded payment of $25,000 if Haverhill bought $100,000 road grader, because they interpreted the law to say what other taxpayers in the other four villages spent had to include a 25% fee to Woodsville if it was for road maintenance in those four villages. I understand from members of the legislature, this is called unintended consequences, and I believe that is what it is. I don't think anyone in the legislature intended to create bad feelings between town residents, but the fact is, it is extremely unfair and needs to be addressed. Almost a year ago, the Haverhill Board of Selectmen voted unanimously to pursue the changes necessary to make our road maintenance fair and equitable among the villages, and therefore make the burden on the property taxpayer as equal as we can humanly achieve. Our solution, which is before you today, gives every road mile equal status, regardless of where it begins, where it goes, or how many deer or bear cross over them. Instead of arguing over whose measurement of road miles we use, the legislation states that we use the New Hampshire Department of Transportation's numbers. These numbers are also how road money is paid in Haverhill. We get so much per road mile, including all the villages, as determined by the New Hampshire DOT. This may seem like small-town politics to some, but to the many families in our area, it's a lot of money directed to one village to the detriment of the others, and they don't have more to give in village taxes to make up the difference. Haverhill residents believe in paying their fair share, and that means every road mile is a road mile, just like every kid in our schools is one of our kids in school. It shouldn't matter, and it doesn't matter what village you're from. We are all part of Haverhill. On behalf of the Haverhill Board of Selectmen, I want to thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak. I want to thank Senator Guyda and the other cosponsors for filing this legislation for us and for working with us in our attempts to make all of Haverhill residents equal. We have argued and fought too long. It is time to fix this once and for all. We need the New Hampshire Legislature to undo the past and allow Haverhill residents to see each other as equals, each paying their fair share, equal regardless of education, position in society, or race, creed, or color. We are one community. Please pass this bill so we can go back to work making Haverhill and the five villages the best place to live and raise a family in New Hampshire. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony this morning. Are there any questions from the committee? Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the Chair will call Darwin, oh no, you just spoke, okay. Glenn English?
I do not see Glenn English in the attendees list. Glenn, if you're present, please virtually raise your hand to press star nine.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm Glenn English, I'm present at the location of the Woodsville Fire District from whence Kevin Shelton testified.
Okay.
I'd like to take this opportunity to speak to the Senators, and I appreciate the opportunity to do so. My background, I was Haverhill Town Manager from September of 1994 until March of 2016. I also came back to serve for an additional nine months as an interim Town Manager between the resignation of my successor and the hiring of Bridget. The Town of Haverhill is a very complicated political system, but it is not unique in that there are other towns in New Hampshire and Vermont that have a village form of government, that have village districts. The legislature, in their wisdom, years ago, created the ability for government to be very specific and at the local level based on the need. Haverhill is an example of that. The various precincts were created many years ago based on a village setup. The towns are large geographically, but are basically made up of villages. Government at the local level began this way and still exists in this manner. In terms of special services, for instance, many towns have water and light districts, many towns have, there are still seven towns, I believe, that have municipal electric departments. Conway is another example of where this local government remains specifically. In our case, the primary reason for the two highway departments, based on my research, is the nature of the roads. Woodsville is a much more urban area than the rest of the town. It was basically built by the railroads when the railroads decided to cross the Connecticut River at Woodsville and Wells River, Vermont. That created the need for more urban roads, which include paving, sidewalks, curbing, and underground drainage. Obviously, this type of road is much more expensive to maintain per mile than a dirt road out in a rural community with no other amenities. That's one of the reasons why the Woodsville people years ago created their own fire, their own highway department. As a matter of fact, that highway department precedes the town highway department and was created for the purpose of maintaining that infrastructure in the village of Woodsville. At that time, the town roads, the other town roads, were maintained by residents on those roads under a system whereby they were reimbursed for providing road maintenance by the other taxpayers. So that's the history. There's been some change. The town roads have become more urbanized, more paved, but basically that difference remains between rural roads and more urban roads that cost more to maintain. So the assertion from the town that the cost per mileage is the same So, the assertion from the town that the cost per mileage is the same is false. The other thing that I would bring to your attention is that there are going to be unintended consequences of this legislation that could be to the detriment of all the taxpayers of Haverhill, including the Woodsville taxpayers, who are taxpayers of the town of Haverhill. I ask that you refrain from passing this bill because of unintended consequences and because there is no plan. There is no plan being proposed by the town for how the highway departments will be consolidated, how the structure will function, who will own the assets, how will the taxpayers in Woodsville be reimbursed for their costs in running two highway departments. This legislation basically mandates a change for which there is no plan, no analysis, and no examination of the effect on the taxpayers. The whole purpose of the highway formula, which has been amended over the years by the Legislature at the request of the town and the Fire District, that whole plan was to make sure that the taxpayers of Haverhill who live in Woodsville are not paying for two highway departments. It has worked well, it probably could be fine-tuned, it probably could be updated based on current valuations of properties, but if you proceed down this road, you are potentially driving the people of Woodsville away from the town and creating a reason for them to create their own town, which would further increase costs and cause further division in the community. So I strongly urge you not to pass this legislation.
Thank you very much for your testimony this morning. Is there any questions from the committee? Okay, seeing none, thank you again for your testimony.
Thank you for the opportunity.
The Chair will call Michael Graham.
Senator, I do not see Michael Graham in the attendees list. Michael, if you're present, please virtually raise your hand, or if you're joined by phone, please press star nine.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you all for allowing me this opportunity. This whole situation cuts deep into my heart and my experience as a longtime resident, not only of the town of Haverhill, but also resident in the District of Woodsville.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Yes, could you please introduce yourself for the record?
Yes, I am Michael Graham, I'm resident in the town of Haverhill, as well as a resident in the Woodsville Fire District. I also own a business that's located in the Woodsville Fire District area, and I've lived here pretty much of my entire life. I served as a Select Board way back in the, for the original 1996 memorandum of understanding as well, in this matter.
Okay, thank you very much. If you could continue.
May I continue now?
Yes, you can.
Thank you. I would like to share some insight with you as you consider the bill presented for a second time by Senator Bob Guyda that proposes to alter the existing road funding formula for the Woodsville Fire District in the town of Haverhill. I'm resident in the town of Haverhill, as well as a resident in Woodsville. In addition, I'm a business owner located in the Woodsville District, served on the Select Board years ago, that grappled with establishing the outline for the then-current funding mechanism through a memorandum of understanding signed between the District and the town. I recall wanting to establish clarity on the funding mechanism in the hopes of minimizing understanding by townspeople and officials of both leadership boards. There have been several subsequent memorandums executed since I served on the Board. In all cases, except the current situation, all memorandums were endorsed by both the Select Board and the Fire District Commissioners. This bill attempts to unilaterally change the funding mechanism with little or no public input. Please do not accept the bill as it is presented. Allow both parties to seek common ground, and then if a change in funding is acceptable to both parties, it can be presented and endorsed by both sides of this dispute. Please view the proposed legislation as inexpedient to legislate and send both parties back for further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony, Mr. Graham. Are there any questions from the committee? Mr. Graham, I do have a question for you and perhaps a request. Is there a way that you can send copies of these memorandums of understanding to the committee?
I do not, I do not have copies or access to all of the memorandums. The Town Office should have those memorandums of understanding, and I recall speaking with Bridget about them a couple of years ago.
Okay, all right, well, thank you very much for answering my question. Are there any further questions?
Thank you.
Seeing none, thank you very much. Griffin, do we have a Mr. James Gary from the DRA attending this morning?
I do. Would you like to have him come up and testify?
Yes, please.
Good morning, Mr. Gary.
Mr. Gary?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Fantastic. I do not have a statement to make. The DRA position on this bill is one of neutrality. I am here, though, to answer any questions I may be able to answer.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad that you're here and available for questions. Does the committee have any questions of Mr. Gary?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Yes, Senator Reagan.
Is the Department in the, part of this audit process?
We are not part of the audit process, other than the fact that we are getting updates from the auditing firm of Plazek and Sanderson. They started their audit in October of 2020. We received one update, we get monthly updates, and the first one was in the year we saw, and that's where we are. We are just waiting for the audit results to be completed at this point, but monitoring them as they go along.
And to my understanding, this audit is not complete?
The audit is not complete, that's correct.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions? Senator Prentice?
Mr. Gary, so October 2020 is when this audit started, and you've had one report from Plazek and Sanderson related to this audit, correct?
Yes, Senator.
Okay, I couldn't hear some of your testimony, so that's, if I'm making you repeat yourself, I apologize. Is there a schedule of reports, and when is this due to be done?
The reports are, that we get are on a monthly basis. Again, we just received our first one, and the best estimate at this time is sometime in the spring, either March or April, for the completion of the audits.
Okay, thank you very much.
Are there further questions? Okay, I have a couple of questions, I've been writing things down as we're, we've been going along. Can you tell us a little bit about your, your position at the DRA and your background and the relevance to the bill that we have in front of us today?
Yes, Senator. My background is, my educational background is, I have a BA in Economics and Political Science from Syracuse University. I have a Master's of Public Administration with a concentration in State and Local Government Financial Analysis and Management from the Maxwell School at Syracuse University. I spent 30 years as a public finance analyst, basically a glorified municipal bond analyst, which means I spent my career reading and analyzing government financial statements on the state and local level. I am also the, in addition to my position as the Director of Municipal Property Division at the DRA, I'm also the Vice Chair of the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank and a member of the Assessing Standards Board.
Okay, thank you. Can you tell me, when did you start hearing about a potential problem with, in Woodsville?
The Woodsville issue has been percolating at the DRA for quite some time. I haven't, I joined the DRA in April of 2019, and I believe I first heard of the problems a few months after I had joined, when I was speaking to municipal advisors by the name of Jamie Dow, who handles Haverhill and Woodsville. And she stopped to ask me, again, maybe a bit of a sarcastic question, but what she thought about a district that co-mingled funds. And jokingly, I think I said that it would be, you might as well ask me what my position is on drinking iodine, because you don't do it. After getting more details, including her showing me emails from the district which told her they were co-mingling funds, I asked when their last audit was, and she had told me that they hadn't had an audit since 2015, and that was pretty much a failed audit. That one was done by Beshan Clouquet, and it was a failed audit in the fact that they completely lacked internal controls, and the ambulance service, which is a large part of the district, was not audited because they had a disagreement over HIPAA laws.
Okay, what are your concerns about the operations of the Woodsville precinct? We've heard that from both sides of the issue, and there seems to be a lot of concerns, but what about you and your capacity as a person working on this issue?
Well, the first is that they're in violation of RSA 4131C, and what that statute does is it mandates that every political subdivision in the state with a population greater than 750 has their finances audited every year by a CPA or a locally-elected auditor. The problem in Woodsville was that for a number of years, they had locally-elected auditors, but the individual never performed the audit, and it was a repeating cycle. They would get elected, not perform the audit, get re-elected, and not perform the audit. I also found it quite disconcerting that the locally-elected auditor was also an employee of the district who was at various points working on their payroll. In addition to the admission of co-mingling of funds, there are also concerns of the lack of internal controls and making it, and making a thorough audit for each year since 2015, I would view as imperative.
Okay, and do you have any comments about the ongoing audit? We've heard a little bit about it this morning, and again, do you have any concerns?
I will not.
Or comments?
I will not comment on it, because it's, what was sent to me was sent to me in a confidential fashion. The auditing firm of Plazek and Sanderson is conducting the audit, as I said, and we just received one update. Therefore, because of the confidentiality, I cannot categorize their work, but I do strongly believe and caution the Senators, respectfully, that the people who, the only people who really speak on the results of the audit is Plazek and Sanderson, or someone they designate to speak for them. They have designated me to do that, so I'm reluctant to do so.
Okay, thank you. And this, you are telling us that this audit should be finished by the spring of this year?
That's my understanding, yes, Senator.
Okay, is there a schedule of the presentation of this audit, or are you just waiting to hear back from them?
No, we're waiting to hear back from them. There's no, there's no schedule, to the best of my knowledge, as of now.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you very much for answering my questions this morning. I really appreciate you being here and answering the questions.
You're welcome, Senator.
Okay, thank you for your testimony as well. I'm going to go ahead and call Robert Clay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good morning, good morning, Senator.
Good morning, thank you. Let me move closer to the machine, I don't want echo. Is that better?
Yes.
Thank you, Members, oh geez, better now?
No, we're still getting a lot of echo.
Senator, I am no longer seeing him in the attendees list, he might have just backed out, and, oh, Bridget Coddling has raised her hand, one second.
Can you hear me now, Griff?
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you, I'll use their computer rather than my phone. Thank you very much for hearing us today. I want to make one important point. We're talking about the audits, and that's only one part of the bill, and that part of the bill gives the Department of Revenue Administration the ability to force Woodsville to continue to do the audits. Woodsville was not a willing participant, and the only reason why DRA or anybody else got involved was because after years of asking for the information under the right-to-know law, we were always stymied, we were never given anything, and when we were given stuff, it wasn't anything that we had asked for. Now, I will say that Representative Ladd is correct, that Concaut should get out of this. The only way these people can sit down and actually have a discussion is when both sides are operating from the same level. Right now, the state of Concaut has decided that Woodsville gets to be on the upper hand, so to speak. They're subsidized by the rest of Haverhill. Now, for instance, what's being audited is Woodsville's private enterprises, the ones that they make money on, and they admit that they use the road money to supplement all those private enterprises. So it's no, no big, when you go to a meeting and you ask the people to vote on whether or not they want to continue to get the free money and subsidize their private enterprises where they make money, or they want to do what's right and have everybody be equal, of course, they get a unanimous vote, says no, let's keep making money. So, but that's not what we're here for. We're here because the Legislature in 2009 decided that they were going to increase the amount of money that went to Woodsville at the expense of everyone else. Now, I will explain that, while I'm a lobbyist for Haverhill, I own a number of properties up here, I pay the taxes, and when I look and see what people have done over the years, when you talk about the memorandum, the last memorandum had more people from Woodville sign, Woodsville sign it than they did the rest of the town. So Woodsville, once again, created a payment system that favored them. And I noticed that, Senator Prentice, I know that you were part of the Woodsville Fire Department, and I'm not, under any circumstances, trying to say anything about the previous people who worked there, but this has been going on for a number of years, and the people down there knew what was going on, they knew they were taking money, and when you look at the roads and you look at the money that they took, they were taking money that we were getting from federal grants and using it to repair streets for their water district. That's not what it's for. Now, waiting is detrimental to the rest of the town. We can't afford the taxes, we're the fifth-highest taxed town in the state, and part of it's because a lot of our money goes to Woodsville. And waiting, waiting more, especially under the circumstances today, just isn't fair. And you know, Glenn English had a lifetime contract to be the Town Administrator, and we have communications here where he has said that he doesn't believe that Woodsville should have to pay for two road departments, but he thinks it's okay for the rest of Haverhill to pay for two road agents and road departments, and we don't think that it is. And when we say about the, I'm sorry, I lost my place, when they talked about the fire departments, the town has tried very hard to consolidate everything so that people can afford to stay in their homes. can afford to stay in their homes. There was a vote last year that said, should we make one fire department? And the people of Haverhill said, yes. The people of Woodsville said, oh, well, you're not going to, not going to fund our department. That's not the point. The point is, is that they want Woodsville and Haverhill Corner and North Haverhill all to become one department. So you have one chief, one assistant chief, everybody works together, and that's, that's not, because they make money. They make money off their ambulance system, and that's actually what's being audited. What we want on this bill the most is for Concord to take out the mandate that Woodsville get a percentage of all the tax money that the rest of us pay and put in, and, and get it at a percentage that's far exceeding what anybody else gets. When you look at the roads, $50,000 a mile versus 9,500, it's not even close, and it's not fair. So alls we're saying is to Concord is, get rid of the part where you tell us how we're going to spend our money, and everybody that's spoken against the bill has said that the town should decide how, how to spend its money. So, so pass the bill, and then allow everybody in the town of Haverhill, including all the precincts, including Woodsville, get to decide exactly how they're going to spend it, how they're going to use it, and they do it as a community, not as a privileged side where Concord has come to their rescue. And if we want to talk about the tax rates and the appraisals, I have a case before the Tax on Land Appeals Board that shows just how unfair the appraisals are, and how some people have lowered appraisals than others. And, and it all goes back to, the same group of people have used and abused the system here in Haverhill for their own personal benefit, and I'd be more than happy to back it up with, with information if you want to get into that part, but really, truly, what we're asking you is, let the town of Haverhill and all its citizens decide how to spend its money, and you can't take the votes in Woodsville where basically they're saying, do you want to continue to be subsidized, or do you want to pay more tax dollars? Of course, they're going to say, no, we want the rest of the town to subsidize us, but the town of Haverhill, the people doing the subsidy, have spoken loud and clear, and they're saying, please, Concord, get out and let us take care of it, and I'm asking you all to take that in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony, Senator. Are there any further quest, are there any questions from the committee? Okay, seeing none. Again, thank you for your, for your testimony this morning. I have gone through the list of people who have signed up to speak this morning, so I am going to go ahead and close the public hearing on Senate Bill 26. Okay, so that means we have concluded our business for this morning, and so, in order to conclude our meeting, I need to take a roll call, and so I'm going to go ahead and call the roll. Senator Prentice?
Prentice, yes.
Senator Rishardi?
Rishardi, yes.
Senator Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Senator Reagan?
Yes.
Senator Carson? Yes. I'd like to thank everyone, excuse me, I'm, excuse me, for attending the hearing this morning. Oh, excuse me, what a time to sneeze. I'd like to thank everyone for attending our meeting this morning and wish everyone having a very good day. Take care, everyone, and again, thank you, and thank you to our staff for all your help this morning. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.